Okay, Select Board's meeting for Tuesday, March 5th. It is 5:10, and we have in attendance Chairman Deedy, Vice Chairman Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, and several people in the audience, including the Fire Chief.
Hello, folks. Mr. Mogul's running a few minutes behind. We're going to start without him. Up first is a public comment. If anyone wishes to have a comment, please give us your name and address for the record, please. All right. At 5:05 is the Finance Committee, and they're running a little behind also, so they're going to come in when they get a few moments, in about, hopefully, 10 or 15 minutes. So up first is payable warrant 1-9-2-0 dated 3/4/19 in the amount of $232,000, I'm sorry, $232,621.58. And then are these added to it?
Yes, we have two more special warrants.
All right. So it looks like payroll warrant 1-9-2-0 SP for $91.31. That's $91.31. And then it looks like a SWP-19 warrant for $11,305.8.
Yep, that's the tax write-off.
That's the tax write-off program. Wonderful. So we're all set with that. And next is regular session minutes for 2/26/19.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then do you have an executive session tonight, sir?
Uh, they're not.
Not completed? We'll move on to next meeting for that. All right, up first is a sign-off on 61A release of first right of refusal for Waterman Parcel at 85 College Highway.
So moved.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Up next is appointment for, I hope I don't butcher it too bad.
Marissa Cuk Obergand.
Yep, for Ag Committee as an alternate member.
Right, and the committee does permit it. Our bylaw in establishing the committee allows there to be alternate members.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sign this, sir, to be safe. Up next is the town meeting annual report 2018 picture they're looking at. Any thoughts?
I will speak in opposition.
All right.
Because this is a canine, and I am not in favor of canines at this particular moment of the year. So I will let the other two members.
Mr. Fox, I understand why you don't like that for the annual report. His tongue is out, sir, and it doesn't, there's no, it doesn't say where the dog is from.
But this dog is trained.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be nice if it did say, you know, the chief.
Oh, that could be added on.
Yeah.
The important thing is, do you agree in principle you want that as your town report covering your new canine?
No matter how you move it, he's looking at Russ. I don't know.
Is there a suit of armor?
No. Let's, we'll bring this back up next week if we can find something a little better.
That's an excellent.
Well, we don't meet next week. It's going to the press. The town report's going to the press.
All right, well.
But we will put more, we will ask for descriptive information that is the new canine.
Could you do that, and maybe put a fence in front of him, so Vice Chairman?
Don't sell past the clothes.
Yeah, ad.
K-9.
K-9.
Maybe it's badge number.
Jack General.
Badge number.
Blah, blah, blah. All right, so motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention?
One abstention.
Wonderful.
That was dramatic.
It was.
It still is.
I started shaking.
I thought it was a joker.
Yeah. So we're on number four now. We did that, so we're on.
Did I take any assignments while I was?
Nope, nope, actually, no.
We didn't have a jam.
I'm more worried about that than anything.
I'm more disappointed I didn't think of that, so I'm sorry.
I wasn't going to bring it up.
You can sign all these, though.
Yeah. All right. So up next is from Chief Bishop. He's looking for us to accept a grant reward for $8,000, which looks like it is part of the safety grant that he applies for every year. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to accept sewer relief fund grant for $1,501 from the Commonwealth Sewer Rate Relief Fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, so Park and Rec, she couldn't make it tonight, Jeannie Reed. We had talked about this at.
This is your jail mayor and chair.
It's in her chair mail, and it was talked about at the.
Budget meeting.
Budget meeting?
Right, and we did look at it, and there is no language there regarding supplanting.
Okay. So Carl, your thoughts were?
Well, I mean, you have something in front of you that adds up to about, what, $73,000?
Yep.
So a 20% share of that would be in the 14 range, and if you were inclined to do something like this, you could commit to 15,000 to 20,000, because when you've had fire apparatus or fire grants before, and you've always been told there'd be local share.
Right.
Then both the Selectment and the Finance Committee would commit to that local share if you were to receive the funding.
And that's where we're at with this.
Right, and then the thing with this is, you could put this on as rail trail repairs at the special town meeting anyway, because even if you don't.
We have the other issue on the rail trails.
You're still going to have to do some repairs on the rail trail.
Gotcha.
Because of roots that are pushing up pavement sections. And I would certainly encourage members of the Board of Selectmen to take advantage and get out there, and get on the rail trail with their animals, their cats, their families, so that they can.
Can we just go with Ret and a Cruiser?
Or even a snowmobile right now?
Well, you normally go with Ret and a Cruiser. We send Joe in the El Camino when he gets pulled over.
I get pulled over usually.
I second that motion. All in favor?
But we could do that, so we could commit to that.
We get it.
Just make a note on that.
Okay, make a note of it.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Committed to.
Right. We understand.
Dress that at the.
And I'm glad that they did that, right, that they've gone, they've done the legwork in the grant application.
Well, yeah, so let's keep her going. She's doing a great job.
Absolutely. No, 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 this is a good thing.
And she's been dealing with me, she's been dealing with Carl, who's answering questions, because it's all new to her. And any encouragement is great. Yeah, that's a wonderful thing. Okay, so that was Park and Rec. Review and award SFD pumper bid.
Yep, that's in your document, and it's in your chair mail.
Well, Chief happens to be here, so Chief, what's going on today? What are we thinking?
So, um.
You've been all over the map with this, baby.
I know.
And it's all good. You learned a lot.
Exactly.
It's in the chair mail?
I happen to have a copy right here.
Yeah, no.
It's back to the original piece we looked at, and then we tabled.
Oh, right.
The three trucks, right.
It's the low bidder.
It is a little better. So we talked about going to a different chassis, which would take different financing.
Right. At one point, we were going to go for more money. Now it sounds like we don't need to.
Right.
In one of the conversations I had, one of the manufacturers that convention last week, International is still having problems with electronics in their vehicle, talking to.
I believe that, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Freightliner you can't get for a year.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, Rich found a four-door Ford in Ag long from a roofing company. So it was a year old. Let us pick it out and go for a ride, and maneuverability was fantastic. And that was the thing we were really looking at.
That's it. So you're okay on that chassis?
We're okay on that chassis.
And this vendor will give you a new chassis, a new Ford chassis?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You just drove a demo. I get it.
Right.
Yeah, just as.
My four-door Kodiak turns 20, and it's about the same size, it's a 6500, turns on a dime versus my pickup, my El Camino, my wife's car.
Your big pickup truck?
Yeah, it turns better than anything I've ever owned. So you're right, they're right in the same ballgame.
So, I mean, there was a concern with Ford that we all have, talking to different folks. They're, you know, pick your poison. Some people still buy them, some people start at them, of every single manufacturer.
Yes.
Is this like a 650 size?
750.
750.
330 horsepower and 750 torque.
Yep.
So that's what's right in front of Joe right now. That is the request by the chief that is on the.
Another bid from another company that was similar but didn't match all our specs. Many of the wheelbase.
Right.
A big concern. And they were the next lowest bid by the time you apple to apples, $200,000. But they are the most, Alexis is the most responsible of all of them, and that was the one we wished to award to.
Okay.
And it's a little bitter. Does not require any other financing. It would still leave us a $10,000-ish contingency between the two trucks.
To do loose equipment.
Right.
I think, I mean, we have, we have one, I think it's a 750 as well, at my day job. And it's been okay. I mean, they had problems with it when they first got it with drive shaft issues. That was, once somebody knew what they were doing, took a look at it, fixed it to the suite.
Right.
I'm with you on the Internationals.
Yeah, they're still, they're still ahead of there.
They have lost their recipe over there, not just in general.
Of course, the new motors were great, but then they're saying, man, we're still having problems talking to it.
So, yeah, so I think it's probably the right approach.
Yeah.
And then with the climate of everything else going on, we can deal with trade-ins. Start to purchase, put it back into general fund.
Right, right.
With that, yeah.
That whole mess isn't like we're scraping pennies to make this.
Right, to make that package work.
Like this will serve us fine.
Yeah.
That becomes a bookkeeping issue, right, with the trade-in would net the purchase price down versus you sell it later for something that goes in the general fund.
Right, but we're not doing a trade-in.
No, I understand, but that's, the mechanics of it is net about the same.
Right.
Right, which we learned with the senior center boss, pretty much.
That's a beauty, by the way.
Yeah.
Anyway, let's dispose of this.
All right, I'll make a motion to award the Southwood Fire Department pumper bid to Alexis Fire Apparatus for $333,565.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. So that part's done?
Yep. Probably should sign it, just to sign it.
Yeah, because the next thing you'll see will be the contract for the purchase.
Right.
And the chief and I have worked with town council for this, the contract for this.
I believe it's in that package, yeah. Might just have to put the number.
If I ask him, he's one.
Is there a weight rating on these chairs?
Uh, you're good.
Going down. You made it, though. You put a warning on the way one.
Hmm.
I thought we put new.
Um, some of them I believe got it.
Apparently not that one.
Up next is, y'all got this amendment, Senator Harmison, Annual Western Mass Legislation Pancake Breakfast, March 29, 2019. They're actually moving it to Southwood. So if you guys can make it, please let parliament. Are you in town? You're gone.
No, I'm here.
Yeah, it's done in the morning.
Yep.
Continue on. All business. Anything on the 250th anniversary?
Uh, no, we'll have our regular meeting in the. Uh, yeah, the third Monday of the month.
Okay.
So that'll be the 18th, 6:30 in the auditorium.
All right. And CRC meeting is 4/9/19, just a reminder. And level of interest on 17 Depot Street?
Yeah, I'm going to do a site visit with the police and five chiefs this afternoon.
Wonderful. Okay.
We've got Terry there, and we need a seat for Terry.
No, 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 I got.
How many other people?
Yeah, for, so we have everybody.
Terry, yeah, Terry has to move up here.
Yeah.
Terry, you want to come up to the.
Yeah, yeah, right.
He wants to. Oh, for, for any sakes.
He's getting pictures, thinking it's in around here.
Yeah.
Yeah. He looks very handsome.
I'm up.
So you guys going to a dance?
Yeah.
You guys going to a dance?
Yeah, school committee.
You guys get dressed up for that?
Yeah.
For the school committee, you get dressed up.
Yeah. Make town and grand will dress up, so we have to dress up.
Should've lucked myself.
Yeah. All right, folks, how you doing today?
Just peachy.
All right.
Beautiful in its own way.
Yeah, okay, so we're there. So we're back up to the top, which is Finance Committee Discussion on STM Warrant Articles.
Do you want to prefer our pros and cons?
I.
We haven't finished them.
Okay.
We haven't reviewed them.
What are we looking for, Russ?
I don't think we need your pros and cons tonight, but you have to have them.
Right, no, we're going to work on them after.
Oh, after.
We're going to vote on them, yeah. Somebody kept us too busy.
Well, you want to take this, this Article 1 first?
Yep, that's fine.
Basically, just for a little background, Franklin Land Trust, who owns or has the purchase and sale with the owner of remaining 60 acres at North Pond, approached this board and talked about, to see if the town wanted to put in an additional half million dollars to go with the million that the voters already approved. Their thinking at that time was that if we put in the half million, they were going to go back to the state and their other, other sources to try to either achieve the entire amount or come close to the entire amount to, to offer that to the landowner for the purchase. And they also relayed to us the caveat that if, in fact, the landowner did not accept, if they did not raise the entire $4 million, that then it would be a wash, and the money, you know, would, the town wouldn't lose out on the half million dollars. So this board forwarded to the community preservation, and then we know what happened from there. There was a tie, and then we asked them to reconsider. And then they approved putting forth the half million for consideration, and then we scheduled a special town meeting. So that is the history.
Yep.
And that's how we got to that.
And the motion is as read. That's all set. The attorneys did that up, so you guys are fine with that. You've seen it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're all.
Yep, we're good, all right. And Article 2 is the North Pond Project, Additional Funding and Borrowing. So that is the citizen's petition that was brought forward for 1.2, and that's the, basically, that's the second article on the final meeting, town meeting that night. Your thoughts about that, or?
Well, I can.
I don't.
I'll start, okay?
Good.
All right. Upstairs, we had a nice discussion.
Yep.
About that. I tried to, you know, point out the facts that, you know, between the Capitol expenditure committee, Finance Committee, and the Selectmen, that we're still in the middle of budget hearings. There's a lot of stuff that's still going on. We haven't even gone through, you know, all of the things in the budget. We haven't had the meetings yet for those. But we have run into big things like DPW's request for the stormwater thing.
Yes.
$100,000 this year. And the big one to me was the roads and repairing the roads, the six-year, $18 million ask by the, request by the DPW for that. And then we talked about, lawyer, Moir talked about having a note about the additional funding borrowing, that thing there.
Yep.
And the different ways we can skin a cat. And I had asked about the possibility of having the Community Preservation Group vote to bond that request for 1.2 million instead of taking out of the general fund. And my explanation was pretty much that, to me, that taking that money out of the general fund, having that not available for the general fund, it was almost a, you know, one-to-one, taking away from having roads repaired, which is in everybody's, you know, interest in the town. So apparently, there's resistance to doing that, maybe from this body. It seemed like they were amiable to that in the, from the CPC. And I guess we'd like to maybe know why that isn't a possibility, or is there something illegal with that, or why isn't that, why can't that be considered?
Um.
What's the question?
The question is, why can't the CPC.
Why can't we go back to CPC and bond?
Bond that, that 1.2 million, or whatever it ends up being.
Right.
Out of the CPC funds, or the future CPC funds, as opposed to taking it out of the general fund, because as I said up there, I can't fix roads with CPC funding. But we can, as much as we possibly can, with money out of the general fund, as far as we can bond.
Right.
So that's my opinion, and.
I think, for one, there has not been an application to the CPC for anything greater than the million and then the $500,000. Secondly, Carl, step in if I'm wrong, I think that you're not allowed to replenish expended funds with CPC money. So you can't borrow one, you can't have a special town meeting article that's asking to go to the taxpayers for 1.2, then have a CPC warrant article in the future to bond, to pay the town back the 1.2.
Not even talking about paying back. I'm talking about doing it.
Why aren't we there today?
Why aren't we there today?
There was no application to CPC for additional funds beyond the million and then the $500,000. This was the route, a citizen petition came in to take it out of town funds. And I don't know their logic behind that, maybe it's timing, maybe it's a bunch of things. I don't know. I can't speak to it. But that, that's my understanding. There was no other application to CPC.
But there's nothing illegal that anybody knows about that, not being able to do it? I know maybe replenishing town funds.
I don't think roads would be ineligible either under CPA.
No, no.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't repair roads with CPC money.
Right.
Correct.
But the CPC can bond for that money.
Yes.
And out of their future earnings.
Earnings.
And they're going to be going up a bit, because not from the state match, but for the homes that are going up there. They will.
Yes, you're correct. I believe we can go back to CPC. We don't have an application in fund, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so go before you first.
Once the petition came there.
I don't.
What's that?
The petition sets in forth did not include that issue, because only the CPC can ask.
Is there time to get a CPC commission in and have a, and have a thing? And again, maybe it gets knocked down in the meeting. I have no clue, but I'm just saying, that's how I would rather have the, because you're taking away from something if you're pulling it out of the general fund.
Right.
And I would not, I myself would vote against the general, taking out of the general fund. But myself, as a citizen, or, and or whatever, I would, I would be in favor of taking it out of CPC funds, because I think that's where it belongs.
Well, in the end, it definitely belongs there, right?
It belongs.
So if this is, if this is coming, regardless how it gets there, it's gets there. I would rather see it out of CPC funds, because it does two things. If you, to me, and this is my opinion, so take it for what it's worth, but if you took it out of the general fund, okay, so we're paying for it out of the general fund. So whether it's the roads, whether, whether everything still gets done, who knows? It is what it is. What I don't like is then the CPC funds are still available to do, you know, and I'm talking out of turn, but to say, do whatever you'd want it to do on top of buying it. My opinion was, well, if we're going to own it, I'd rather see CPC funds do it, because then it kind of ties up the CPC funds. So it can grow slower, because they would have that payment yearly, you know, be it 20, 30 years. Yeah, I'm with you on that. But I don't have an application in front of the CPC. I'm not sure if I am the one to do that, to be quite honest with you. I don't think I am.
So no, it works.
But I don't know.
Finance Committee.
Right. I mean, even for them to reconsider the $500,000, we really didn't have an application. I basically called their chairman and asked them if they would revisit it.
We did have an application.
But we did.
And they voted on it, right?
Okay.
And then we.
See, I don't even.
Well, when we had our meeting, what is that, about a month ago?
Right.
From just today, right, the CPC had an application.
They did, yes.
They voted and came to a tie, so they reconsidered.
Considered existing application.
Reconsider an application that was in front of them, and they voted in favor of it.
Okay.
And our commit at that meeting was that we were either going to have a $500,000 general fund article, or a CPC warrant article out of special. We've done that, it's happened. Then the citizen petition comes in, but to that, to the million and change in, in the citizen's petition, there was no commensurate application to CPC. And I think, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, I don't think that there was a timeline to get that in front of CPC and then, and heard and voted on, and to commit to bond. So.
Right. To go along with the dates we have now that we're moving forward with.
Right.
Now, you have a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other thought, too, I had talked to Ben Coyle today, and, you know, I hate saying stuff, because then people just piss a moan, but I said, all right, if this thing doesn't get voted down, is the, can, can, if it does get voted down, can an application still go in front of CPC after the fact? And of course, he said, sure, you know.
You're talking for the $500,000?
No, I'm talking about the 1.2, the 1.2. You know, so if it doesn't pass, is it dead, or can, you know, and I don't know if it's the citizen's petition that goes in, back in front of CPC. I don't know. But is it, is that road still open? And Ben said, yeah, of course, the road is still open to that.
Problem's the timeline, right?
No, right, it still goes right back to the timeline and to, and to when, who lets what, let what funds go or not go, and all the other mess that's out there with the funding, but.
At one alert.
So, sure.
So I emailed a gentleman about the option for bonding to CPC, and I was told not to bring it up at the last CPC meeting.
Well, it's interesting.
Can you finish, please?
And it was also written into the minute, or to the agenda, that only that one specific thing could be discussed at the meeting.
Yeah, it was interesting.
So I was not able to bring that up at the meeting. I think it might have been.
And none of us were, right? So the attorney said they can only vote on what's in front of them, because as I, as I told you.
The only thing that could be discussed, not only voted on, but discussed. So I couldn't even bring that option up at our last CPC meeting.
Correct, and I.
It was written that way intentionally.
Ow. What was written that way?
The, the agenda for that last meeting.
Correct. That's correct, because you had, there wasn't a bonding issue in front of the CPC at that time.
Right.
The only thing was the reconsideration of the vote of the application that was in front of you for $500,000.
But the chair could have agreed to also let there be discussion on the other point.
I don't think so. It's up to the attorneys. I also think that there was no application for anything a dollar more than $500,000.
There couldn't be discussion, as the way I was presented, you know, we were there before me.
Yep.
He said there couldn't be any discussion about that vote before the vote from the people.
Correct, correct.
We could discuss from the board.
Correct.
Before the vote.
Correct.
But that was all that was able to be discussed. We were not able to discuss anything else, you told me.
Why?
And I would have liked to have brought up.
Oh, I had stuff to bring up, too, as we talked. There was another $225,000 I wanted to pull out of CPC to put towards this, and, and I was told.
I didn't talk about that either.
Couldn't talk about that either. So I had, I had objectives there to bump that number up, too, but.
And that's why I'm wondering why wasn't there also other available opportunities to give information or discuss those things at that meeting?
I don't know, other than the, the thought process was we were just revisiting what was voted down, right? I don't think we were.
I did present it to the board before the meeting. I don't know why it didn't maybe, or even your idea.
Right.
Wasn't available.
Wasn't available, according to the attorney, says, no, you cannot. So, I thought there'd be a couple of comment, I thought there was maybe a shot this way or that way, but same theory, I was told the same issue, so.
So going forward.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going forward.
Yes, sir.
We inquired about the timeline that's been mentioned as the end of March.
Yeah.
Approximately.
Right.
And how critical or how steadfast, you know, cast in stone that is. And the impression I got was that if there's some sort of commitment, then when the actual, when the funding actually gets put in place, it might be a month down the road, two months, three months, as long as there's a commitment, i.e. town meeting or, I'm not sure how far the meaning of that term goes. In other words, for example, if we committed here tonight amongst us that we would look into or support a proposal to reintroduce a CPC warrant article where they bonded for this money.
Right.
1.2, for example, so we got it out of the general fund. Is a commitment at this table enough to satisfy the commitment that these folks are talking about? I don't know. And I honestly don't know whether that's, pardon me?
Before the state pulls their money out, that's a.
Well, yeah, in other words, to meet your deadline, that's what we're talking about, we're trying to.
I mean, they extended once, they might, they may do it again, I mean, that would be a question that we'd have to ask.
Well, so, moving forward, is, is there interest in this group at the table to look into whether or not we can support an effort by the CPC committee to review again the North Pond project and perhaps commit to bonding that amount instead of just taking the 500, well, just take the 500 and receive it at that.
Right, to add.
I mean, it's an option.
It is an option, yeah.
I'm not sure that it holds water because of the timeline. But I don't know what else we can do at this point other than, I'm not sure how we do anything else other than go to town meeting and either have the vote and it goes the way it goes and then everybody goes home.
Yeah, my understanding too is if they voted to approve it at town meeting, we still couldn't then go back to the CPC for the financing part. Once it's approved, it's approved.
So we'd have to actually pull that warrant article table or take it off the table for consideration at town meeting with this proposal that I'm talking about mine, where we go forward with the CPC borrowing.
Right.
A lot of logistics.
I don't even know if we're allowed to table that, I wouldn't know where to start.
I don't either. It's doable, I mean.
Yeah, I think anything's doable, yeah.
We pull warrant articles off.
Yeah, that's true, right. Our warrant articles.
Well, again, I'm not sure how to do it.
No, understood.
Maybe the petitioners have to do it.
The thing is, the only thing that could happen is we could reconvene as a CPC committee, vote on the option of bonding and put that on before the petition. If it passes before the petition, then there'd be no need for the petition vote, and that could be withdrawn.
So warrant already posted though?
So you'd have to have another town meeting.
Warrants are posted, so.
You'd just have to have a.
You'd have to have another special.
Your withdrawal of it if those other things happen. Would probably have to be signed by the majority of the petitioners.
I think they would, because the premise is to.
Oh, no, I just think, but, but in the, two or three people can't do it on their behalf. I think a majority of the petitioners would also have to have.
There'd also have to be, well, I could be wrong, I think you need, actually would have to have someone come forth with a petition or an application to CPC for the 1.2 million dollars.
Oh, yeah, that should, that should go through conservation commission, would file that through the CPC.
Somebody's got to.
Because they're already in all the other articles as the land, is going to be in the custody.
I just, in the history of our, our history with CPC, I don't know the statewide history, I don't think the CPC of its own action appropriated money or voted to send a town meeting an article without an application in front of it. Or, or even in, in our CPC has gone above the ask. Someone asks for $100,000 for a roof and they go, that's a great idea, here's a quarter of a million dollars. Not exaggerating, but that's what we're talking about here. So even, even to the question on the, the original, the second application to CPC, I don't think it was in the purview necessarily of the P, of the CPC to say, 500,000's great, we want to bond for 1.2.
Right.
They need to, if they need, if there was an application in front of CPC to do it, then it should be heard. And it could be heard, but then now you've got all these machinations. We, a month ago, we committed to these two issues because we felt under the timeline that was in front of us, that's what we could do as, as the board of selectmen at the ask to CPC and we, we came out of that meeting with, to the two options, right, which, which happened. And so now, and then, then the citizen petition came forth. So I don't know how the CPC could get an application post here, obviously it can't get on the special, that warrant's posted.
Right.
Right? And I, you certainly couldn't amend a citizen's petition, that's a mess.
Can they do anything from the floor? Can they do anything from the floor or not?
They could table it, they could table it.
No, I'm talking about coming, coming from the CPC with something from the floor to ask for that.
I, I mean, there's a process that we follow to, for us. No, I get it, I think there's a process. And, and you'd be torturing, essentially torturing the process beyond, I mean, if, if, no, I get it. I, the, the, the idea is solid, if you, if you, if CPC had an appetite to do this, and I don't know that there is, there was, that was a, that was a close vote on the reconsideration, right? With a statement like, look, we're into this for a million, here's another half a million, okay. So, and, and that board is there to hear and act on a petition and let, we, that board needs to do its thing. We'd have to see how that would go. And, and you'd also would definitely, at this point, at this calendar date would need approval of the state and the seller to extend the term out further because we can't get this done in, in the timeline set for. I think it's really the state that's driving us down, pulling the money.
The seller's date is much further off. Yeah, it's the, it's the state.
You know, so.
It's the state funding that's triggering the March 30th.
Would this amount of money be considered a commitment?
No, we're not, we can't speak for the CPC.
They can't speak for the townspeople either because they can come in mass and vote no.
What if, what if the bond is voted for, approved, and we don't use it right away until the closing? And then we approve through CPC at the, the annual town meeting.
Yes.
De-bonding at that meeting, and then just don't use the other bonds.
You'd have to talk to town council, then you start getting to a very gray area, that has to go to town council. Yeah, no, I get it, and I don't disagree with you, Chris, I just.
They'll react really quickly.
Can we do that, and not, yeah, can we, can we do that? I mean, that's, would be the question. How, how could it possi, how could you possibly do it? What, what, what method of cat skinning is there for that scenario? You understand the scenario?
I don't know what the terms of bonding are, if you have to take it for a certain amount of time or.
Well, you, you, I mean. Well, CPC's taken in some good money every year.
Absolutely.
And mortgage, yeah.
If I can just say, we.
Yes, the term.
Of our motion.
Yeah, what's that?
The finance.
Okay.
And if we put that, in the event the town raises money through other sources of funding or whatever, the bond would be reduced or maybe not even used. So we try to put flexibility, so we appropriate it, we vote for the bond, but then we say, look, if you can get other sources, I think you can see that, I'll put those free.
Yeah, looking at that, you didn't put a term in there, right?
No, no, we don't put a term, we can't do that, except we write the town officials, the treasurer, and the selectors. But we put in the flexibility, if you have other funds.
Right.
Then you don't need the bond, and that might work if you just then with CPC.
I know, I'm just thinking what Chris just said, you know, in terms of coming forward with another bond authorization request from CPC at the annual and whether or not this one buys us the time to get into May because we also have the deadline for the DCS 400,000 is June 30th. And then obviously there's the PNS agreement that the trust has with the seller. So there are those issues, and then there's the issue too, and when you have bond authorizations out there, usually what happens is you come along at some point and you have to vote to rescind bonds because it's like a credit card limit, you can't have, they, they go toward your debt service limit. So you have all these things out there that will be authorized but unissued, which is what Chris is talking about. If you were not to issue this one under these terms, but issue one at a later time, written by town council, written by bond council, and if it were to be supported by CPC, by a majority vote of CPC, then you'd, you'd get into that, but we'd have to really figure out how we go back also later at another town meeting and rescind this one. You know, and whether or not that would have to have a majority of the petitioners sign to do a rescission on a, on a bond issue. That'd be an interesting, that'd be the first time I've ever seen one of those. But we have a lawyer in Boston that, that could, that could answer that question at some point. But this is the motion that.
It's a draft, it's, but it's, it gives you the idea.
Did you send money to Ben yet?
No, I haven't, I haven't circulated it, I'll check.
When this thing started, I'm gonna be, repeat a few things I said a couple weeks ago. When this thing started, we all sat in this room and we agreed, this was a good goal to go after this. And this board, I think, is, is worked pretty hard. You know, we didn't sell calendars or do spaghetti dinners or anything like that, but we worked pretty hard to raise some money. We, we have preserved 80 acres and now we're looking at this remaining 60 acres. I'm also involved with Dennis and a few other people on the open, open space planning and, you know, we're, most likely the committee is gonna specify that the 60 acres is one that we want the town to preserve. And maybe we can work out something, maybe CPC will do that, maybe they won't do that, I don't know. But I don't think we should give up one way or the other. I don't think this land is going anywhere if we don't purchase it this year. My opinion, thank you. But getting back to the, the petition, I gotta be frank, it's not good government, it's not good financial planning whatsoever. We just did a override a proposition to an app a few years ago. We did debt exclusion for our schools. And we made a commitment to the taxpayers at that time that we were gonna be very frugal and very careful about any borrowing. And what we're trying to do is, is debt rolls off, we replace it. And, and we've been true to our word, we, we kept our tax rate kind of, kind of balanced. And we have been planning for several years, and that's why we have a capital expenditure committee, to do this planning on these big ticket items. But, you know, we're, we're working on our buildings, we're working on ALS, advanced life support for our fire department. We just had the fire chief in here tonight on fire apparatus. We have a lot of major things going on. And I know some people are gonna say, well, this isn't gonna affect the tax rate a lot. It's still 1.2 million dollars. And if you're bonding it, it's gonna end up costing money and interest. So I guess what I'm saying is, if, if this ends up being the article, I don't think that, I certainly can't support it, you know, even though I'd like to see that land preserved. I can't support this because it'd be going on the tax rate. And it would affect all our other departments and, and I couldn't stand by and do that in good conscience. So that's my opinion.
All righty, sir, anything?
It would be really lengthy.
Okay, then I, thank you.
And I know you have other stuff to do.
I concur with Russ.
Yeah.
You know, if it can go through CPC, fine, but any other avenue, I, I could not support it because of the impact that it'll have on the town as a whole. And I think that we are charged with looking at the entire community. And I keep going back to roads. The road, we have promised that these roads are gonna be taken care of. We've had a five-year projection on getting it taken care of. And, and I worry about things being put off even a couple more years for those people who have already been waiting several years to have things done. I, I, I think that that needs to be supported first. We have a lot coming forward and I hate to put any more of a financial burden on people.
Yeah, I'd love to see it go through CPC personally, you know.
That's what it's there for.
Yeah.
And it is. All right, Michelle?
I just want to mention one quick thing too, I think, you know, I was thinking back about, you know, that original CPC vote when there was a tie and it failed. There really was a discussion from the folks that voted no. We've never got a chance to hear from them, what their concerns and issues were with it and I think it's really, really important to hear what everybody has to say. People could have spent, you know, misunderstandings about the project and the funding and so forth. I don't know, some of those people were new to the committee, you know, as well. I think we're also in a different situation now than we were then with this bonding with order. So they may see it differently than they thought before and with some, you know, really thorough discussion about the cost of community services, the environmental impact and all the other pieces of the project. If that is really discussed with CPC and presented with facts, people may make a different decision in light of running a meeting that way. So I think if it were able to be revoked on the bonding through the CPC, there may be a good chance for that. You know, and I think the committees that send their representatives, you know, to the CPC should have discussions about how their, their certain boards and certainly you folks with your appointees, you know, on the committee should also be able to have discussions with them ahead of time to make sure they understand how much the select board does support the process, how much the select board does want the bonding to come through the CPC. You know, if those discussions occur, you know, I think that possibly we could get that. As Brad has said, we, we want to put whatever wording into this motion that allows you folks to do what you do best, you know, run this town, keep our taxes down. You know, you're the experts, we count on you for your advice. And so if there's wording that we can put in there that we can all collaborate on, then we're definitely for that. And if we had to go back and get, you know, signatures from folks to do something different and that's in the best interest of the town to get this project to happen, then we're gonna do it. You know, we're working darn hard out here every single day, this group is motivated and, you know.
Okay.
We want to make it work right.
And there would be a new application of ours, wouldn't be a revisit of the old.
No, no, we can't do it.
No, no, understood, but that's, you had, kinda said it that way, I just wanna, I know you know, but you know how that works. All right, thank you for your time, folks. Thank you. You're welcome. Guys are good?
We're gonna reconvene up there.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here, we gave.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
See you, Chair.
Oh, I know. More questions, more questions, more questions, more questions. We can have this.
Have a good evening, thanks for coming.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I get some out, it's $126 a person.
Yep, thank you, great, thanks.
The whole cost. And I mean, I, I don't understand why, I feel it's, you know, not, I mean, it's being unfugible to say, or not being like Westfield for the water situation, et cetera. How can you say that that's not being frugal if it's only $126 per person?
Right now, we're in a meeting, Kim, so I can't go over it, but I'd be happy to go over it.
Can I make a point of order to interrupt your meeting?
No, I don't think the chairman's gonna.
Point of order, man, is for procedural.
For Robert's rules.
Robert's rules, it's for procedural, what you're talking about is a subject, you're not talking, you're not, you're not talking about procedural.
Kim, we, we have to be at another meeting at 6:30 and we have to meet with the fire chief in executive session. So like I said, I will be happy to discuss it with you.
I will email you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Shall I send everyone a carbon copy?
You can.
What about Mr. Steinhardt, would you like one too?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Kim.
Bye, Kim.
Bye.
All right, under new business, what do we have? Anyone have anything on a new business?
How much time do we have?
We have three minutes.
I have, yeah, I have like three minutes as well.
Yeah, three minutes.
All right, very, then I'll just hit a couple of things really quick. I'm involved with a program called Bitter Angels and we're looking to meet on a Sunday in April, April 7th for about an hour and a half. And I need someone to sponsor, and I'd like the select board to consider sponsoring it.
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will you need a janitor?
No, I don't believe so.
Will we need a parking attendant?
Nope, might have to set up a couple of tables because we have, might need two rooms that we have to.
Understood.
What was the, the name of it again?
Better Angels.
Better Angels?
Better Angels.
And it's non-political.
Thank you for that.
And the next thing I have, Mr. Chairman is.
I belong to the Broken Wing Club.
I know you've received phone calls and visitors, I've received phone calls and visitors about an issue at the senior center of the hours of operation.
They followed me all the way in Blanford, believe it or not.
Right, I did speak with our director today and she gave me some of the background.
Yes.
And I asked her to.
She running for mayor of Westfield?
No.
No, okay, I would be.
I asked her for her different thoughts on things and she was going to continue working to see if she could find some sort of solution.
Okay.
So I, I thought it would be good if we had someone from the board or, or maybe someone else work with her to possibly look at different avenues that maybe we could achieve some sort of compromise.
Well, no one, nobody knows this building better than Mr. Steinhardt, so.
Well, it's my question about a place in the building, the question is who would be in charge of them legally and chaperoning them?
Right.
Because they were going to go into spaces where they weren't gonna be chaperoned.
I under, I completely understand.
So that's why it always made sense when the council on aging was watching.
someone would change their schedule, you know, and might do nine to three instead of eight to two or 10 to four. She has.
It was the vote of the, of the council on aging.
Council on aging did vote this, but she said the council on aging would be receptive, she felt would be receptive if we could come up with some sort of mechanism.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Apparently, just, apparently Doug hasn't gotten his phone call.
The blank stare is helping you? Okay, because I have no idea what you're talking about.
Apparently, people used to, after lunch and after activities, some people would play Scrabble, card games and they would stay and.
After they closed.
And they, they would turn off the lights, they would turn off the coffee pot and lock the door and, and leave. And apparently it's.
Some old bars used to be.
Been going on for.
A while.